Ready, begin.
My good Lord, your nation's beautiful land, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
You will.
Do we have any requests to speak on about anything not on the agenda? Oh, roll call, please, sorry. I'm already present.
Commissioner Gutierrez. Commissioner Boykert.
Present.
Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Espander.
Present.
Commissioner McDowellis.
Present.
All present, one vacancy and two vac-- I'm sorry, two vacancies and one absentee.
Okay. Do we have any requests to speak on anything not on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to review either.
No, sir.
All right, well, let's go right to our first and only item.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners. So, tonight, for your consideration, the applicant requests that the Planning Commission review and consider variants 2023-0002, conditional development permit number 2022-0031, PPD 22-0056, and the environmental assessment. So, tonight's project, you can see on the aerial here, this is in the center of town. There's an industrial corridor on Rialto Avenue. So, generally, at the northwest corner of Cactus and Rialto is where the site is located. It's a 7.8 acre site, composed of multiple parcels. This is a look at what the zoning is today. So, as I mentioned, it's an industrial corridor, so you'll have the M1s adjacent, M2s to the south. This project is actually bound by Rialto Avenue. It has a railroad parcel that's owned by BNSF on the east side, and then also to the north is the Pacific Electric Trail. So, this is the parcel configuration today. One of the conditions of approval--
Real quick, so all the R1 is resonant, right above it, I think?
Yes, on the top, across the trail there.
So, that total top and directly across them, it is all residential?
Across the trail only.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, the applicant will actually be required to file a lot line adjustment. What that's going to do is go ahead and merge their parcels into one for the purposes of this project, and you'll see in the center there, there's some city-owned, there's a water facility there, so there's a couple of parcels that Rialto Water Services has, and currently today, they access that via an easement across the property there. So, this is what it's going to look like today. It's going to go from that configuration to something that now has a Rialto Avenue frontage there. So, that, you know, will be part of the lot line adjustment as well. This, what you see on the site here, is what they're, what's calling Phase One. This project's going to be built in two phases. Primarily, the entire site, except for the northeast corner, is going to be developed. For those of you who are familiar, right adjacent to this trail there, there's a, the flood control channel along Cactus Avenue. It is open to air for at least 200 feet in that area there. The applicant was going to come forward and propose to underground that, just like it is on the rest of their site, but the county flood control has already started that project, at least in their environmental review for that. So, what's going to happen here is they don't know the flood controls project for certain, but they are starting working on it. It's anticipated, you know, it could probably take like a year or two. But when they do finally finish that, this project will then go into Phase Two, which will go ahead and come over that same area and install additional parking spaces, landscape buffer, all on, on their private property, just over that easement. So, this is a little bit closer look at what the site design is. The arrows are just kind of indicating the driveways. Not just that they're entrances, but for ingress egress, these are the driveway locations. There's two on Rialto and then two on Cactus. The automobiles will be able to have full access on Rialto, on the westerly driveway, and then also vehicle access on the northerly Cactus. The trucks will have to access the truckport via Rialto Avenue, and then there's a couple of options to, to exit there, but on Cactus Avenue is where they'll predominantly come out and head south, and then follow from there the city's required truck routes. So, this is the site layout. It has a parking on both east and west sides. There's a drive aisle to the north with a 10-foot planter, and all of that is adjacent to the existing Pacific Electric Trail there. The truck court is actually oriented to the south of the project site, so that it's not, or furthest away from any potential or sensitive uses in the area. This is what the floor plan's going to look like, so it does have the office located generally in the southwest corner of the building there. This is what the building's going to look like, so staff has reviewed it, compared it to the design guidelines, and made sure that it has all of the required articulation, roof variations, materials, articulation, and this is just some of the aerials that were provided, and what the office area would look like, your view from Rialto Avenue, as well as Cactus. So, in terms of landscaping, so at the end of the day, when this is all done, it's going to have 12% or 12.3% coverage, which exceeds the 10% that's required. That's going to come via the setbacks along Rialto, and then also perimeter planters, 10-foot, that go all the way around the site there. Basically, there was an environmental or initial study that was prepared by DUDAC. It was an M and D, and it was circulated for a 30-day comment period. So, the mitigations that were suggested for this project involved, these listed here for nesting birds, and then in the event of discoveries, they have obtained a qualified archaeologist, paleontologist, and also as well, you know, the Native American Kits Nation has also requested that they have a tribal monitor on site during all grading disturbances. Also, let's see, yeah, so we talked about the consultation that actually took place on April, and then, you know, the environmental circulation period is also listed there for you. So, this mitigation actually, M and D satisfies all of the requirements via CEQA. This project is actually consistent with not only the M1 zone, but it's also with Chapter 18, 112, the city's indoor facilities. And lastly, the city Rialto's design guidelines as well. Listed are the goals, the general plan that this project is consistent with, 2-16, 2-22, and 3-1. This project actually, if you've driven by, will replace an underdeveloped, currently vacant site, and replace it what the M1 deems as the highest and best use for the property. All of the project notices for this project were mailed out to all the property owners within a 1,000-foot radius. Were also published in the newspaper, and they were posted on the site as well. So, with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolutions L, M, N, and O, to approve the environmental, 21-46, variance number 23-002, conditional development permit 22-0031, and precise plan of design 2021-0056, respectively, to develop the 159,700 square foot industrial warehouse with the associated improvements on the subject property, subject to those findings and conditions here. And that's all I have for you today, but I did notice the applicant is here, and staff is also available for any questions that you may have.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, we want to open the, real quick, Frank, let me open the public hearing, I'll do that first. We'll go and open the public hearing, public comments section, and before we go to the public, maybe Frank's question would get asked on that. Frank?
Fine.
Go ahead, buddy.
Excuse me, you said you mailed out the announcements or notices to within 1,000 feet?
That is correct.
What was there any, what was the response?
So, we didn't get any citizens or residents that actually replied. There were 240 notices that went out because of the radius, so as you could see from the aerial, there were about, you know, half or not more of the area was industrial, but all to the north, there were about 240 in total. But we did not get any responses from the neighborhood.
Okay, okay. My other question was, no response, okay, fine. Just keep my mind, I was thinking about what you were saying. That's okay, we can go on.
Any questions before?
What, what are some of these other adjacent properties, industries with them?
Okay, so, yeah, in the staff report, it'll actually indicate that across Rialto Avenue to the south, that's an M2 piece of property. It's a plaza, basically, a multi-tenant for auto repair, so you'll see a lot of auto repair in that section there. There's also a contractor's yard to the south. Also, across Cactus, there are other industrial, Dan's lawnmower happens to have, you know, a shop there with some repairs. There's also a truck repair there. To the north, across the trail, is where you have that R1, and then to the west is where you have a county facility, an education facility for adult education.
That's a school next to it, then, Ron?
I think it's called Bob Murphy, yeah. It's not a K through 12, but it is a--
Continuation.
County, yes, a county facility, adult school.
Excuse me. My other question, it just hit me, is this owner developer or owner occupied or--
Well, the owner, the owner of the land is developing it, but the building is speculative, so there's not a known tenant at this time, at least not to my knowledge.
So, we don't know who's coming in?
Not at this time.
Okay.
All right, let's go and go to the public. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
I do have two speakers.
Okay.
The first speaker is Delshaun McClellan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May it be appropriate to let the applicant speak prior to taking the public comment?
No problem.
If they would like to present first?
Applicant, please, and if you can, if you can please state your address for the record.
Oh, sure. Yes, Steven Lindgren, Lincoln Property Company, 915 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California. Yeah, just wanted to say thank you to staff and planning for allowing us to come and present tonight. We're really excited about this project. We hope you guys see all the merits that we see in this project to help, you know, elevate this piece of land into best-in-class industrial project, to help further drive growth within Rialto. Our, our full team is here, and all of our consultants, so just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the larger development team, and we're here to answer any questions that you guys may have on the project.
Do you have any idea what type of industry you want to, what's the build and size and design that you're proposing? What kind of customer would you, or rental would you get for that?
It's important, especially in, in these difficult economic times that we're kind of going through. We, we tried to build a project with as much flexibility as we possibly could to try to, to try to get, you know, as many types of tenants as we possibly can. So, warehouse, distribution, manufacturing, all, all the different types of major industrial uses, so.
Yeah, I mean, just the concern, there's so many vacant warehouses. I was driving here today, there's vacancy in all these brand-new ones we built right off the freeway, and just, obviously, my concern is the city of Rialto turns into an industrial box city, but no real industry going on, so do you have someone in mind already, you think, or?
Yeah, I think, you know, the first step to really being able to go out and procure tenants is to get your entitlements secured--
Right, right.
Because all the tenants want surety on how long is it going to take to construct the project, which we have a really good kind of visibility on. So, I think this is a, you know, kind of a big step to really be able to go market that to, to different types of tenants.
Have you built one, a project similar to this recently?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
What, would it, who ended up being the renter for that?
We've built a number of projects. We've built one for Walmart, we've built one for Amazon, so, so kind of major, you know, major tenants.
What's the closest one that you've built to Rialto?
The latest, the most recent was, was in, was in San Diego.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Okay, the first, first one we have?
Delshaun McClellan.
Sir, if you could state your address for the record, I appreciate it.
Say it again?
State your address for the record, please.
I'm currently looking for a piece of property out here, but I don't live out here, but I'm representing my 6,000 members that live--
I know, but did you fill out a sheet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, can you state your address for the--
I didn't put that on the paper.
You didn't put it?
No.
And you're refusing to, is what you're saying?
No, I mean, I, yeah, I can say it.
Okay.
I, I live in Victorville, California, right now, currently looking to buy a piece of property out here.
Okay. Go ahead with your comments.
Oh, okay, well, again, my name is Delshaun McClellan, I'm a member of the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters, which we represent over 6,000 members that live here in Rialto and the surrounding cities. Lincoln Properties, this is, they're a good developer, they're a responsible developer, and they're bringing community wealth to your city, and that's what we're all about with our members that live in this, this area. A project like this will bring a hun, a lot of jobs ongoing and after it's built to your community, and we're just all about community wealth and uplifting your city. The developer knows that a state-certified apprenticeship program, they're on board with that.
Okay. Did I hear you correctly, you said you have 6,000 members that live in our city?
We have 6,000 members that live in the surrounding area.
I was going to say, you'd be the largest employer of the city of Rialto, that's pretty awesome.
No, 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 we have about, about 300 members that actually live--
I think you still would be the largest employer of the city of Rialto with 300 members.
Hey.
Bigger than the city, maybe.
Oh, yeah. But I, but we just, we would like you guys to approve this project on going forward, because it'll bring good jobs to your constituents out here, and a livable mortgage-paying wage for our members as well. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else requesting to speak?
Our next and last speaker is Jason Baez.
Mr. Baez, if you state your--
Honorable counsel, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak--
Can you state your address for the record, please?
1123 West Parkview Drive, West Covina.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jason Baez, I'm a proud member of Labor's International Union of North America, and we fully support this project. You know, it's a hard thing for our members to work all day in the sun and then come here, so that's why we--
Hold on, I don't know where that's coming from.
That's why we come sometimes for them. I think that was a Star Wars--
I thought so too.
I'm not a Star Wars guy!
Someone has hijacked, do we have it on the online--
It just had to be, it's a crazy thing.
Hold on, we'll, we'll let you's time get you after this, then.
No worries, no worries.
They don't call you Luke, do they?
Go ahead.
It may have came from the media center, possibly.
Oh, next, Daniel, can you tell? Thank you, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so, as I was saying, you know, each one of these projects is of the utmost importance to us, you know. At these projects, we get the opportunity to prove our worth, learn new skills, and very important for us, we build relationships with contractors and other workers. That's how we get on to the next project the majority of the time, so each one of these projects is very serious for our career. It also brings good wages to the community, and helps us to continue paying the bills, taking care of our children, keeping our, our medical benefits up to date, and, you know, gives us a lot of opportunities. You know, these projects, they also help the community, you know, they boost sales for local vendors, you know, more jobs, more need for housing. They attract new investors and bring the current market rate up. We also have a responsible applicant who's did everything in their power to meet up to the, to the standards that the community expects, and we're just hoping we can get your support for this project to go through, so we can continue working and taking care of our families, and opening the door for new people to come in and join us. Thank you so much.
Before you go, excuse me, you have, what do you call them, trainees?
Yes, yes.
Apprentices, apprentices, I'm sorry, apprentices. Do you bring them on the job when they're finishing up their apprenticeship, or you wait until they get their certificate, and then bring them on the job?
No, no, you know, I went through the apprenticeship myself from the very beginning, you know, a job, a project like this opened the door for me to come on.
I understand.
So, once it, you know, opened up the door for me, they sent me to the training center, the apprenticeship program, and then I would work for like three, four months, then I'd go to school for a week, and then when I had the time, I would go to school on weekends of my own free will, just to get more certifications, and while I was working, you know, met, everybody kind of would help me, you know, even the other trades would help teach me, but, but my trade especially would help me, but as I was working, you know, they, they taught me, but no, I didn't, I didn't need a certification to get on to the project, we just need to pass a boot camp, and it's a very difficult task. We pick up 100-pound concrete bags, carry cinder blocks, and it kind of, you know--
I understand. Where is your, your local located?
Well, we, I work all around.
Your local?
My local?
Yeah.
Well, West Covina.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, do you recruit from the area, or do you bring apprentices from the outside?
Well, it, it, when, when there's a--
You want to have a help, no?
Yes.
My name is Ralph Felder, I'm the coordinator with the organizing department with the Labor's Union. We have local unions in, in every major city in the United States and Canada. We have a local union that's right here in San Bernardino, and they have about 3,000 members that cover this entire area, and we bring in apprentices, young people into the union, on sometimes a monthly basis, we have boot camps, at least quarterly, and these young kids are able to go out to projects. That's the reason why a lot of these projects are important to us, because that's where they start off. Our journeymen are there, and about 20% of those hours go to our apprentices, because those are the future in our union, and along with the carpenters' union as well. They're the future of the union, so it's up to us to train them to take over for us when we exit and retire. So, we have apprentices from every city in Southern California.
Okay, and the reason for my question was because if you're drawing from apprentices from this area, you're drawing, you're, you're training people who will stay in the area--
Absolutely.
And live and support the area.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm looking for.
No, absolutely.
Improvement for the city residents, and for the young people, because a lot of them don't go to school, don't go to college, and they don't have to, but as long as you provide a good training and good opportunities, that's fine.
These are excellent careers for young people.
What about, what about the modern technology?
We train the latest technologies in concrete finishing, robotics, you know-- We have systems that go into tunnels or pipelines to inspect, and we train in those areas.
Yeah, marketing.
All the latest technologies you have in construction, we train in, we have, we're certified in, and we even have trained trainers that are supposed to train, you know, the next gen.
Oh, you're on it now.
Oh, yeah, we're on top of it. You see these great ways that are built around here, all the major stadiums and dams in the country that have been done, they're all built union. So far, stadiums built union, the expansion of LAW was all built union, and there's a reason for that, because they want to make sure they build it once, they build it right, and they build it to the highest standard, and we're on the forefront of training. We graduate about 700 people a year in the Labor's Union, and we have over 3,000 apprentices at any given time. All of our instructors are credentialed instructors, so when they go through our training program, they can also get college credits for that training. So, they don't necessarily have to stay a laborer or, or a carpenter, the carpenters have, they, they can move on, become an instructor, go on to be an architect, be an engineer, you know.
So, you have that pathway to college for further education?
We absolutely--
Still within the construction industry?
Absolutely. All apprenticeship programs are connected to a, to the college system, every one of them that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you please fill out a card, too, before you, before you leave? Fill out a card, yeah, thanks. Do we have anyone else requesting to speak? Okay. Thank, if you can also, please state your address for the record.
Yes, of course. Good evening, members of the commission, my name is Paige Gosney, I'm a, a leniency council for the applicant, LPC. My address is 2010 Main Street, and that's in Irvine. Just a couple of quick points I wanted to reiterate. First, I wanted to reiterate our thanks to staff, for Daniel Rojas, Daniel Casey, Rosas, Daniel Casey, Paul and Colby, for all of their hard work on the project. It's been a long process to get here. As Steven said, we're extremely excited about this project. This is a central piece of property in the city, it's a high-profile corner. It's a, it's a high-profile corner that's been underutilized, I think, for a long, long period of time, and, and we believe this project is really going to, you know, elevate the project, elevate the, excuse me, elevate the site, bring in jobs, and, and really be a benefit to the city, something that the city will be proud of, and, and we're really excited to, to bring that to you. Just a couple of points to address questions. Commissioner Gonzalez, you asked about the noticing and the 1,000 feet and the responses. I just wanted to bring to the commission's attention, before we, we went down the planning path, this is before we went to EDC and everything else, we reached out to a consultant, Kathleen Kennedy, who went and met with each and them, each and every one of the individual residential neighbors on the other side of the Pacific Electric Trail, to solicit their feedback about the project. We had conceptual drawings and a site plan about what we were proposing. We wanted to get their feedback, we wanted to get their thoughts, and we wanted to have that information before we went to EDC, so that we could present it and share it with EDC and, and get their thoughts on it. So, we did reach out, and all of the responses that we got were overwhelmingly in favor and supportive of the project, because I think a lot of, you know, what the property was being used for at the time, and has been used for, for, for a long time, and, and what we were going to do to the project and elevate it, or to the property and elevate it. So, we got a lot of the positive feedback from those neighbors, they did have a chance to weigh in, and they weighed in at the very beginning. We also held a community outreach meeting as well, prior to coming before Planning Commission tonight, this was back in February, the city helped coordinate it. We were in this room, we had snacks, we had poster boards up with the project, everything that we were proposing. We wanted that community engagement, we wanted that opportunity to discuss the project with the local residents in particular and get their thoughts, so there was a lot of that outreach.
My concern, and I'm sure the other commissioners agree with me, our concern is that the businesses that we bring in, the establishments that we have, are going to be beneficial. Warehouses have a history of polluting, and there's new research that some of this pollution is affecting the minds of older people, like myself, and maybe that's why I'm here, but it does impact people with respiratory illnesses, and we want to keep the pollution down, and that was my reason for asking about the training and that kind of stuff, because we don't have, I don't have any problem with warehouses, as long as they're within a certain distance. They have a certain, what is it, zone that they, from residents and schools and parks and places where people can be impacted with the pollution. Traffic also is a, is a major concern, because our, our roads are going to the dogs. We have potholes all over the place, we're beginning to fix them up, and we need to keep repairing them, we understand, but we don't want to repair them every year, because we got so many heavy traffic, so many heavy trucks traversing the, the streets.
I appreciate your comments, I absolutely understand where you're coming from. You know, in terms of the impacts to sensitive uses and receptors, the project was specifically designed to minimize those types of impacts. The dock doors are facing south on the other side of the property, away from the residences on the other side of the Pacific Trail, facing towards a heavy industrial, an M2 property, which is south of Rialto. The property itself, as you mentioned, you know, you want to have industrial uses on properties that are intended and planned for those types of uses, and this is an M1 site, this is an M1 corridor with M2 across the street, this is exactly the type of use that the city contemplated for this property, and we believe, and we've, we've really strived to design it in a way to minimize all of those potential impacts and avoid all of those potential impacts to the community. We would also note the size of the property as well, and all of the new, of the building, excuse me, and all the new regulations that would require us to minimize and avoid those types of impacts. But the environmental document as well, the mitigated negative declaration, looked at the air quality impacts, looked at the traffic impacts, and found that none of them would be significant, and we didn't get any comments to the contrary, and we believe that the evidence that's in the record before you tonight supports that the project will not have any of those kinds of impacts, and will, we believe we elevate the city and elevate this high-profile corner for the city, and, and for that reason, we're excited about it, but we understand your comments, understand your concerns, and we think that we've addressed them with the project and how it's been designed and studied.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I did just have one other comment, Commissioner Gutierrez, your question about the marketing, and I understand there's warehouses that are vacant, et cetera, developers like LPC, this is what they-- Developers like LPC, this is what they do. They've done tons and tons of these projects. People much smarter than me look at the economics, look at the market. Before they underwrite a project like this, the cost that would go into entitling it, they, they make sure that they're certain that there's a market, that the project's gonna be leased, and that we're gonna have a tenant, and a tenant that the city's gonna be proud of, and a tenant that's appropriate for the site, appropriate for the business. So, I understand that, you know, when you look around, you might see other buildings that are, are vacant, and that's gonna be a reflection of the market. But we are a hundred percent confident that we're gonna find a great tenant for this building, and it's gonna be a great asset to the community.
Okay.
Along that same line, um, as, as you build these warehouses and you're, you've got truckers coming in and going out, uh, you've got to be on top of the competition, where they're ta- taking drones and delivering all of this stuff from, um, distribution centers. And, and, you know, you have to keep up with that stuff too.
We would certainly want to be on the cutting edge of, of, you know, the, the industry and what the market requires. And I don't think we're quite at the drone delivery stage, but I know that's an issue, that's something that we've been looking at. Um, and, you know, this project and the site, I think, will be designed to accommodate, you know, the highest and most technologically advanced, um, support systems for whoever tenant is ultimately in there.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else requesting to speak?
No.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any opposed, all in favor? Yeah, all right.
Move to adopt the attached resolution, exhibit L, M, N, and O, to approve a environmental asset review number two zero two one dash zero zero four six, variance number two zero two three dash zero 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 two, conditional development permit number two zero two two dash zero zero three one, and precise plan of design number two zero two one dash zero zero five six, respectively to allow the development of a one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred square foot industrial warehouse with associated paving, landscaping, and lighting on seven point eight one acres of land. Assessor parcel number zero one two eight dash one four one dash four nine, and assessor parcel number zero one two eight dash one four one dash six three, and assessor parcel number zero one two eight dash one four one dash seventy, and assessor parcel number zero one two eight dash one four one dash seven two, subject to the findings and conditions therein.
All in favor? Do we have a second, brother? Do you have, do you have a second?
I thought you had a second already.
What's that?
I think we already had a second.
Yeah. Didn't you do it, John?
Yeah.
Did, okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, I oppose. Okay. Three one. Motion carries. All right.
We don't have any action items.
No, we don't. Well, do you have, do you have any comments, Paul?
Just a couple, chair. Um, I did want to introduce, um, Haiti Gonzalez. She's our newest administrative assistant. And if you see more of Haiti, she's gonna be taking on some of the planning commission responsibilities, so. She'll be here more, and she's here to help out planning and, and community development overall as well, so. We're glad to have her here. She just started Monday, so.
So, she's your new boss then?
Pretty much. She's the one that'll have the, she'll have the, the big stick and tell us when we get our staff reports in and when everything's due, so.
Good deal.
What is your name?
Haiti.
Haiti, A.D.
Glad to meet you.
Another Gonzalez, 'cause Gonzalez, Gonzalez, and Frank Gonzalez as well, so.
You're one too?
Yes.
And we're not related, huh?
And.
Glad to have you aboard.
Welcome.
The director of community development and, um, actually Daniel Casey and Daniel Rosas will be heading down to San Diego for ICSC Intercontinental or Convention for Shopping Centers. And that's why he's not in attendance today as well, so.
We're gonna put a shopping center where the cement factory is off of Pepper?
That would be, that would be ideal. Um, it is currently in the county. They are processing a project there, and there is ongoing conversations with them as well, however, so. The next planning commission meeting will be November eighth, which is in a couple of weeks. And then, just so the, um, commission, just a reminder, so starting in December, we're gonna go to the first and third Wednesday of the month. So, we'll have one, maybe two meetings in November, and then we'll start that in, in December.
Just remind us when we get, we get out.
We'll be sure to do so.
Yeah.
Um, and then also-
There wasn't enough budget to get some of the commissioners down to the conference?
I wasn't a part of that. Um, typically, the council will go with, uh, community development. Um, I, I don't know if, in the past, the commission, has the commission gone in the past to ICSC John or?
Yeah.
You've been there?
Oh, yeah?
That was when it was in LA.
In L- oh, that was a couple, a couple of years ago, right? So, okay. Um, I did want to, um, wish, um, Artist Gilbert, uh, recovery. I know he's been in the hospital, and he'll be getting out shortly. Not sure if the commission knew that, so I talked to him earlier, and he seemed, um, eager to get out of the hospital and get home, so.
You, which hospital?
He, he did not really, really add information to me, so, not sure.
You're supposed to ask.
I was, and he was quick to-
Get you off the phone.
You think he was in a, in a rush to, um, to get off the phone. And, um, so he, so I wasn't able to get that information from him, so. Um, other than that, um, just wanted to wish the council a good night after this meeting. And also too, one more thing, uh, we are gonna have general plan update. That'll be coming before the commission in probably December, just something to keep in mind. And then the, um, specific plan amendment for both Foothill and Central, those will be coming before the, uh, commission in probably December as well. So, we'll have all that information for you ahead of time, so you take a look at it and, and review it, so. And that's all I had. Okay, any planning commission?
What's happening with the, uh, that apartment complex that was on Foothill, that five acres across from Stater Brothers Shopping Center?
We haven't seen any plans submitted yet. Um, at this point, I get to check and see what the status is on the actual entitlements, um, because they do have to submit within a year unless they require, um, requesting a year extension in order to keep the applications, um, open. So, let, let me look into that for you, Commissioner. I'll have, um, update next, next week.
I just hope it isn't like the people building the medical center there, and once they got all the investor money, they, uh, disappeared.
Yeah, I do know that the, um, they were moving dirt around a few months ago, and I don't, I don't know what happened, um, why they stopped, but I'll-
That's what I say, it looked like they started and quit.
Yeah. So, I'll have a, I'll find out for you and have an update for you next meeting.
Planning commissioner, any thoughts? Do you have a motion adjourned?
One final thing. Paul, I, if it's possible, when, when these, uh, projects come through, can we have maybe some more information regarding the pollution that's generated and what measures are coming along with it to mitigate it, neutralize it? Because, you know, when, when you see a tree every thirty feet, that doesn't say it's gonna do anything for, you know, keeping it.
Yeah, and when they, when they complete the, um, mitigated negative declaration, all the mitigations are in there. And then we could get you, we'll, we'll point it out, we'll have a copy in there for you exactly which ones that they have to do to mitigate.
How about if we just get a summary of it from staff?
We, we could get a summary for you as well.
Well, I, I just would like us to maybe be a little more proactive on, you know, we're getting landscaping. It's, you know, fifteen percent, which means it's over the ten percent. But is it gonna help us? Is it gonna help mitigate the pollution? Just, just some more, I guess, uh, solutions rather than upfront.
And, and a lot of them are very clear, like, if they have to do a birth study, they'll say, under the biological section, you need to do a birth study before you, uh, before you start any grading and those types of things. We could get you those and put in a nice little summary for you as well.
We just want to know if we're making any efforts to mitigate the pollution that's being generated. And by the way, how's our housing going out at Renaissance?
Great question.
And the list of items we take a look at periodically?
Uh, the Renaissance Residential. I know that Lennar has taken over that project, you know, the same builder that's developing River Ranch, um, up there in Lidle Creek area. And they are in plan check right now with their, um, track map, final track map, and also their civil, uh, drawings as well.
Good deal, that's great.
When will they be out of plan check?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably a few-month process.
From which date, in the past or in the future?
From the time they submit. Yeah, I mean, there are variables that are up to them, right? I mean, they need to respond to corrections, resubmit, so like, I can't give you like a certain deadline timeframe.
They're not an amateur night builder though, they know what they're doing.
Typically, a project like that would go through plan check for a few months.
They've been building for a long time.
Or, yeah, they're not gonna be crazy as stuff.
I mean, they're, they're building other product right now, they're eager to move forward on this. We have a weekly meeting with them.
Oh, good.
So.
Yeah, but it brings up a great point. I mean, the state is so hell-bent on destroying its energy industry, but it's not concerned with pollution with trucks. It's schizophrenic behavior. It really is. We want to kill the fuel industry, but we, because of, uh, global warming or climate change, whatever term they're using nowadays, but we want to add as many trucks as humanly possible on the roads. It's, it's schizophrenic behavior.
But they're gonna be electric.
And I gotta have my patio five feet away from the property line, but I could build a living dw- another, eight, what, ADU, they call it, or EDU?
A.D.
A.D.U., yes.
I can build it damn near on my neighbor's house and get a permit. That makes no damn sense.
That's true. Yeah, setbacks are four feet.
Which is nuttiness.
Yeah, and they typically do, well, they typically do five feet. They typically do five feet, which is where our code is for most, most residential units.
Right, right.
Well, actually they do, because they can't have, they can't have an opening on that side, so they can't have any windows if it's only four feet. It's more of a fire thing, so.
I see.
So, it's kind of forces them to do a minimum of five feet.
So, they have to put a planter like I have to put one in that gap? Something, yeah. All right, I'm just teasing, that was personal. Thank you so much, brother. I appreciate you putting up with our pointed questions, which are, sometimes that's the way it needs to be.
No, no, it's, that's why we're here to-
Yeah, appreciate it.
Support the commission.
Daniel, for the heck of it, how long has the plan's been supposedly around for Renaissance? How many years?
For the residential?
Yeah.
Uh, which plans specifically, like the entitlements or the? I, I, well, I mean, you know, there's multiple steps, so the-
No, no, I understand, but we've been chatting about the residential for quite a while, correct?
Yep, yep.
So, it's, it's just interesting, you know, a couple more months, a couple more years, you know, just-
Just a ballpark.
I, I, yeah, I mean, it's a private development, you know, and they go at their speed. Uh, so, uh, you know, the, the land was entitled, uh, as far as, uh, made residential when the Renaissance specific plan amendment was adopted in twenty sixteen. And then the planning commission approved the subdivision, um, early this year. Right, so there was that, that timeframe before Lennar came on board. And I think it was March or April this year, planning commission approved the subdivision. So, we're only, you know, what, five or six months into that, and they're actively in plan check.
So, we're moving along.
Track map is approved for two years. So, they have a two-year timeframe to get this map recorded and get their improvement plans reviewed and approved.
Yeah, we've, we've been chatting with them for a number of years.
Well, not Lennar. See, Louis, Louis-
It's been Louis, yeah.
Yeah, and now Louis has a home builder now. And Lennar is proposing to develop the project. So, since Lennar has been on board, it's, it's, I would say, relative to any other project, moving just as fast, if not faster.
Lu- Louis isn't gonna build any.
They don't wanna build, they like warehouses.
Yeah, Louis, Louis this whole time, the last seven years, has been looking for a builder. They have one now, in Lennar. It's-
They just, they set off to-
I think that we just, we just, obviously, make sure we're clear to keep it moving as fast. We need more housing, big time, in the city.
Affordable housing.
We need a damn warehouse.
We're ready, and we're, we're processing as quickly as we can.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If it's any consolation, most of our M-one problems gone.
What is a city doing to, um, to develop some kind of a program for affordable housing for residents? Or are they?
A city program? I mean, uh, separate and apart from the housing element, or like a direct program to house?
Yeah.
I mean, we'd have to do some research into that. I don't think I have an answer. I'm not sure if Paul has any additional information.
Okay, because we-
Specific city program to house individuals.
And the reason I'm asking this, is because we keep talking about affordable housing. Affordable housing now, this, at this time, is much much different than when I bought my house.
Yeah.
Way back.
Yeah, I mean, the city's identified its housing needs as a part of the housing element. And with the recent, um, zoning, uh, overlay, this, in order to try to encourage developers to come in and develop higher-density, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not aware of any project right now that we're specifically working on, but certainly the city is taking those steps to encourage those developments.
I think the only thing that, you have different programs from the federal government, first-time home buyers, but at the end of the day, I mean, we could only print so much money before it's worthless. That's why it costs so much to build a house now. The inflation is out of control. So, if we print more money to be able to start a new house, it's just gonna keep increasing cost of fuel and everything else.
My concern, my concern is that we're building houses that people in Rialto aren't gonna be able to afford.
But we're there.
We're already there, yeah.
We're there.
We're past that point then.
A low, a low-end house is five hundred grand right now.
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
That's affordable.
That's right.
What you call affordable.
No, that's what they call affordable.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, thank, appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank, appreciate it, thank you guys.
I'll go as a favor, I.